I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. This meeting was duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Tonight, our prayer will be offered by Legislative Manager Donna Graham, and Alderman Tebow will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the benefit and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Oh, presence. I was checking my status, I'm sorry.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Senet.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
President Walshire.
Here.
You have 15 in attendance. Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. I wanted to talk about a couple of things particularly, and mention the sad passing of a very significant Nashua, but that at the end. First, I wanted to talk about the potential exclusion that is on the, is on the agenda, but for which there is a special meeting scheduled on Thursday for further discussion. But I want to at least to introduce the subject a little bit now. We are under the auspices now of an unworkable, what I think, budget cap, which was given us, to us by the state legislature, and I note again, against the unanimous opinion of the Nashua House delegation, 27 to nothing against this. They thought it was unworkable, and it's now proving to be unworkable. And one, and what we're faced with now is that even though we are seeking to pass bond resolutions and accept grants, which will have no impact at all on the fiscal '25 budget, not $1, we still have to get an exclusion to enable those proposals to be adopted and those proposals to go forward. Although, when I get to the Stellus thing, that is one that where we would need to spend cash, but a one-time, one-time item. The, the idea that we need to include these things, grants and the appropriation or the authorization of bond issues in the tax cap calculation, and we need to do what we call an exclusion in order to authorize those things going forward, as I already said, makes no common sense. So I've talked with, and this is not a workable situation, so I've talked with various aldermen on both sides of the aisle, so to speak, about proposing in the next couple of months a tax cap that would go on the ballot for November of '25, the city election, when we can go forward with something like that, and which would replace this unworkable situation we have with a tax cap that would be the ruling charter provision going forward. But looking to the exclusion, the reason we need this, and, is to undertake various infrastructure capital projects that are really in crying need. What do we have on the agenda there? And these have all been reviewed, both, well, all been reviewed by our ad hoc committee who was prioritizing the many, many capital projects that we have. What, what, what would I propose that we go forward with? The Stellus replacement, the field, the garages should be bonded and fixed. They are in a situation where they're not failing now, but they should be fixed quickly. And if you want to take a tour, you can go over to Elm Street, right over here, and you can see that on the lowest level, in a cage that is used to house vehicles and various items of equipment, the, there are maybe a dozen of these jack posts holding, you know, supporting the principal horizontal concrete piece, which is holding up the whole garage. Now, those could be taken out, and the garage wouldn't fall down today, but we don't want to get it to the point where it would. And in addition to that, there's concrete falling in various places, there are rusting metal pieces within the, within the concrete structure that should be removed and replaced. In one place, the capstones on the top of the garage have been removed and are now covered with canvas, otherwise we'd have water draining down through the, through the structure. It is, it needs to be repaired. Number two, another one, number three, I guess this is, the Greeley Park Stonehouse. Again, it may not fall down tomorrow, but I'm telling you now, it should be done right away. Because if you think, the issue, you know, if you think, imagine if that, if the roof on that thing collapsed. That is 100 years old, and it is a bit of a complicated project because we are hoping to retain the look of the, of the stonehouse with the tile roof, rather than, a quicker, cheaper way of doing it would be to, you know, put shingles up there or something. But that project needs to be done. The fish ladder, if you want to license the Mine Falls Dam, the fish ladder is a condition being imposed by the federal government. That needs to be done. Otherwise, we lose a revenue source. The police training facility, can't say that that is as much an emergency as the others, but this is something we promised the police department, they're relying on this, and it's in design, it's ready to go ahead. It's strength, it will strengthen the police department if that project can get done. And there's a little bit of work at the landfill that need, that needs to be done. Although, there is a memo in your packet, which is being, which, which will be, of course, on the agenda, assuming that this gets referred, or gets tabled until Thursday night, where Mr. Cummings mentions that, you know, you could use some of the cash on hand to fund the SURF account. Now, we, I'm not going to propose that, because I want to be able to tell you that we can pass this exclusion and undertake these capital projects without adding any money to the current budget. There's enough in the SURF account to buy equipment for fiscal '25, and we can budget that in fiscal '26. So I think that is a conservative, safe way to go, along with proposing the tax cap that, that I mentioned. Now, let me turn, but we will discuss this all in more detail on Thursday. Let me turn for a moment to the issue of the Stellus Field Replacement. You have on your desk Resolution R24104, which would appropriate $1.5 million from the assigned fund balance, an account in which there is, which, there is a lot of money. It was $10 million before we generated this year's surplus, so there is certainly way more than enough to pay for the Stellus replacement. The assigned, the assigned fund balance, again, that is not, the unassigned, which is $31 million, in this account, there's around $20 million. So there is enough there to fund this, and that's on your, on your, on your desk for a first reading, but that will need an exclusion. Right now, we have a debt exclusion. Right now, we have $1.4 million under the, under the budget cap left. What you're going to see in the next, this meeting now, and the next meeting, is this resolution plus a grant that the transit authority, the transit, transit wants to accept, in the amount of $600,000 for engine rebuilds and repairs to the buses and, and a couple of new vans for the paratransit system. Both, this, this and the grant cannot be pursued unless there's an exclusion, because with, let's say, $1,004,000 towards the Stellus, we couldn't take the grant, but if we take the grant, then there's not enough to do this. So we really need the exclusion. But how did we, I mean, I wanted to address this for a moment because, I mean, I think there's some misunderstanding as to how this arose and why this happened. And of course, I understand the disappointment of the players, of the families, of the coaches with the failure of the field. I mean, I played high school football, under the lights, I mean, there's no question, you know, it, I know, I can picture what, you know, I can understand what, what a disappointment this can be, although I would say my, in my memories of high school football, they really have to do with what happened in the game, rather than, you know, what, whether it was Friday night or Saturday afternoon, I mean, it doesn't, didn't, at this point, it didn't really matter. But, but we want to get that field replaced as soon as we can. And again, we have the money, and we have always had the money to be able to do this. The, but the process by which a, any, this is a school facility, and is required to be such by law, because there were state school funds that went into the purchase, to the, to the construction of this. So from, so as a result of that, it, it was, is, and will always be a school facility. The, and is under the primary care of the school department. The, and just to demonstrate that, there is a contract with BG for the use of the field. BG pays, you know, modest amount of money, $15,000 a year now. That contract was entered between the school department and BG in 2021. It never came here, I mean, I, I never even heard that they did it. I'm not, you know, fine, makes sense, no problem, but it was, it's a school department issue, and they handled it. Then, another thing that happened is there is, there was a reserve account established some years ago, and money that BG contributed over the years was deposited into this account. Great. A few years back, I think 2018, the athletic department, school department moved forward and used $160,000 of that money to buy a new scoreboard. Fine, probably, I, that, no question, the right decision. The scoreboard was broken, and it needs, the stadium needs a scoreboard. But no one came to the city, no one asked for the permission, no one even told us that that was happening. I suppose we observed the scoreboard, but this is a school department facility. Now, what, and the way this has progressed is the school department has proposed this as a second priority project a couple of times, both to the Capital Improvements Committee this last spring, and to the, and brought the project to the Joint Special, and to this ad hoc Capital Priorities Committee we, we ran. But under the law, state law and city law, but state law principally, any school construction project, and Brickdowd can tell you this, is under the supervision and is run by the Joint Special School Building Committee, again, a creature of state law. That committee consists of some aldermen and some members of the school board. They have total authority. The city could not step in and do a project without, without their permission. So we look to them to tell us what the school priorities have been. And of course, we have spent, as you know, hundreds of millions of dollars on schools over the last five years, six years, with McCarthy, with the rebuilding of, of Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, with some of the vestibules, and all, all the things that have gone on. Somewhere approaching $200 million, somewhere between $150 and $200 million, as well as smaller projects. But we look to them for the priorities. Now, what happened was, they received in January a request from Sean Smith that, using a report from 2023, which said the field was still okay, this is a project, should go ahead. They, then, when the project, then when a second, the, the annual report, the annual evaluation of the field took place in July of 2024, where it said there were some problems in some areas of the field, the Joint Special, excuse me, the Joint Special moved forward and asked us to consider that as a project, but the budget was already passed. So our plan is, okay, we'll spend money from the unassigned fund balance, and we'll do the project this fall. But even then, in the, in July, no one was saying this was unsafe, and really, what, if you, when you meet with the school department, they think that things deteriorated more rapidly than were expected. I don't fault anything the school department did. They spent money on the scoreboard, good. They, I mean, there are a lot of things that could have been done differently, and I wish they had been, but they were relying on a report which suggested the place was safe. Needed replacement pretty soon, but not, not unusable. They relied on that, and things deteriorated more quickly than they expected. And in the end, unfortunately, or fortunately, you know, Brian Conant and Lisa Gingriss decided the situation was unsafe a week or so ago, and they asked that the facility be closed, and it was. They're looking out for the safety of the players, which is their job. But I don't fault, I don't personally, I mean, other people have faulted all of us, but I, I don't any, fault the school department in the way they handled this, or the Joint Special in the way they tried to prioritize the various projects that were in front of them. As I said at the beginning, or as I said along the way, there are a lot of things that could have been done differently. For example, when this was replaced in 2011, I think the idea was the city would have this preserve and would build it over 10 years, but the previous administration never proposed putting assent into that reserve account. And five years went by, no money, no proposal, nothing. And at least when I came in, I, you know, I didn't even know that this had been discussed in the past. All I, you know, we just talked about, okay, this field needs to be replaced pretty soon, just like the Greeley Stonehouse needs to be replaced pretty soon right now, and just like these garages need to be fixed right now, there's been some delay, but, you know, hopefully, we won't see anything like we're encountering at Stellus. So I'd like to say that I, we should move, but on the plus side, we should move forward with the exclusion, we should pass this resolution, we can do the project and get it done this fall. It will be supervised by Joint Special. They have a vendor, they have a proposed contract, they have a proposed price, there are other improvements to Stellus which need to be made for safety reasons, according to Ms. Gingriss, as well as the fire department. So we can really fix up the stadium if we move forward with this in the near future. I know that was long, but these are a couple of, I'd say, important subjects. So on a, while we're on high school athletics, I wanted to turn finally to Frank Alsikas, who died this past week. He, he played for Nashua High on the football team, he went on, played for Harvard, he was in the, he's in the Holman Stadium Hall of Fame. He was just a great guy. When the Nashua Girls High Basketball Team finished number one in the nation in the USA Today poll, 1987, he was a big fan, he went to all the games. He was just, and he was, he ran Friends of Nashua Athletics, which raised, you know, in his prime, a lot of money for, you know, as a booster organization for various teams at, at Nashua High then, and, and then both high schools. So I'm sad to say that he's passing his, that he passed away, his calling hours, I believe, are on October 25th at Farwell Funeral Home. And with that, Madam President, I will conclude.
Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you and I had a conversation sometime last week about how I'm a no on the tax override, and that, I think we're in a kind of agreement about it needing to go on the ballot, which I'm glad to hear you bring that up here today, because I think it's very important that if we take measures like this to override spending, that the residents have a chance to weigh in, especially if it might become something that's recurrent. If the residents decide that's the way it has to go, that's the way it has to go. But as I said here today, I'm, I know, I would support it going back to committee, being tabled for the presentation for Thursday, but just like I talked about at the last alderman meeting, we got people taking it on the chin in the city when it comes to how much they're paying in their property taxes, potential water increases to subsidize towns, and then people like me are, need to take it on the chin and let the spending cool, no matter how beneficial it is for the upper-class people in the city to keep building their wealth, there's people in the middle that can't afford to live here and work here. And even though it won't impact this year's budget, it'll certainly impact the budget in the future, and cooling spending would be a good idea. Or even an alternative could be, oh, we need to build this garage, but maybe we privatize the parking department to cut fringe benefits and pass the cost on to a private contractor to reduce healthcare costs to the city. There needs to be some give and take, and that's where I'm at at the moment. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I think what was mentioned as being on the ballot might be a reference to potentially introducing a tax cap rather than a spending cap, and that's something that I, myself had talked to former treasurer for debt, and reached out to the current treasurer more recently, and had talked to a number of other aldermen, and I cannot be the first person to have come up with that observation, that obviously, our issue isn't if money is going to be provided to the city to better implement services, repair fields and that type of things, then what was most likely intended by the spending cap was a way to limit the impact on taxpayers. So to that end, Mr. Mayor, I commend you on that effort, because I think a tax cap rather than a spending cap would serve our city much better. I can't necessarily guarantee that it's going to ensure that all of the other bodies and entities involved in spending do so in a, a manner that reflects foresight. There's been a number of issues, I think, with other entities pointing fingers at the Board of Aldermen over how much money they have to spend, and, you know, what they're able to do, and I sat in this chair multiple times over the lead-up to the Budget Committee, because I was watching the Board of Education meetings, and I was watching the comments that were being made about how the Board of Aldermen and the mayor never fully fund things, asking, what do you need funding for? What do you need support for? And this was not presented in their school budget, it was not brought up, even when they presented here. It was referenced briefly, I think, by our own DPW, that, you know, that should be an expense being looked at, but as was pointed out by the mayor, they have to ask, and they have to tell us what they're, what they need to do. I'm sure Alderman Dowd has a better recollection. I know we talked briefly about the, the need to do this at Joint Special School Board Committee, and no action was taken by the school board. And there's a point where they're supposed to be managing these buildings and these facilities, and they have to let us know what they need. So I'm glad we know of it now, I wish we'd found out about it, and able to salvage, in order to salvage, you know, people being able to go to local games, because while the students most likely are going to make it to the games and have those experiences that they need, not every family has transportation. Not every family is going to be able to get to watch their seniors play, and I think that's an important takeaway, too. This is something the school board should have considered, that I'm glad we closed it, because I don't want a kid turning his ankle or twisting, you know, whatever, getting injured in a game. I'm glad no children are going to be hurt on this. But I do think this should have been a solvable issue, and it's unfortunate that it happened this way. I think it just speaks to the importance of Joint Special School building, and how maybe there was a little bit of pushback in the past about whether the aldermen were supposed to be exploring or, or chairing, or whatever. I think it's true now more than ever that it helps to have a second set of eyes on their facility management, and particularly a set of eyes that has an eye towards the city's whole budget. So I think we should take action on doing what we can to fix Stellus as soon as possible, and I think we should probably look at the, if there's a pattern of behavior where maybe there isn't enough long-term thinking or will to, to take steps that maybe the Board of Aldermen are better able to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I got a, a comment and then a question to the mayor. So along with, and I don't want to mess up his last name, but Frank's passing, we also had, I know he doesn't live in Nashua anymore, but the passing of Greg Landry, who was a major Nashua star, played quarterback for the Detroit Lions, went to school with my dad, and Alderman Dowd, whom I'm sure he'll mention as well. And I remember a couple of years ago, grabbing, getting a football card of Greg Landry, and always wanted to meet him, never got the chance, because he didn't live around here, but his passing, I mean, he's definitely a legend in this town. And then my question to the mayor is, when the spending cap went through years ago and all the, the state reps signed off on it, was that, was it all one party, or was there people from both parties signing off on that, or going against it?
There was a brief, well, just like a little bit of a brief history till I get to the answer. So the spending cap was put in place in the 90s, it was, you know, in force and for many years. Then we made, in around 16, I'm going to say a minor change, there was a lawsuit brought over that, even though the city didn't even ask for this, the court invalidated the whole spending cap. That went to the Supreme Court, they, they affirmed the invalidation. So then the legislature got involved, and the House delegation at that time was, and that's, this is getting to your answer, it was, it was 26 Democrats and one Republican. All 27 asked that this not be done, because this was going to create a big mess, which it has. But they insisted, and the majority in the legislature insisted that, especially in the Senate, that this go ahead. So against Nashua's will, the state legislature imposed this spending cap. And now we're faced with an unworkable situation, in my opinion, and that is why I believe we could come up with something better, which I believe there is support in the chamber to do, which is to put a tax cap, something like Manchester, but not the same, on the ballot, so people could consider using that approach rather than, you know, this thing we have now.
Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I was, I was in the legislation when we, when that came back to the, the legislation, and the truth be told, when that was put through, it only affected Nashua. There was no other municipality, so it was put there to specifically attack Nashua. So the 400, and 400 state reps and the 24, I think, senators voted just to affect Nashua and only Nashua, no other municipality, and they backdated it just to affect Nashua. That's how focused it was, was just to get to Nashua. But I, I want to, to speak to the elephant in the room relative to Stellus Stadium. Back in, I think it was June, we had a Back in, I think it was June, we had a resident of Nashua who came to the podium and spoke to us about Stellus and started to speak about the alarm of the potential of the grounds at Stellus and mentioned it. And I did hear that, and I think we all did. And probably like me, many of my colleagues went and asked a couple of questions. And when we did ask those, those couple of questions, we probably got all the same answers. And the report was, it was in need of being repaired, but it was okay. And that it was slated to be done over the fall. And then I don't know what happened, but suddenly something very bad happened that one day they played and the next day it didn't. I don't know what happened. I'm glad that that citizen came forward, but it didn't happen. I'm not, I'm not going to point fingers at anything. But knowing that that has happened that quickly, I will be honest with you, I'm having anxiety about our garages that are okay now. And knowing all of this, I don't want to put off what potentially could happen. We have things falling down on them and so on. They're okay now, but are they going to be okay next year if we put that off? So I'm just putting that off because the mayor had brought that up. So I'm just saying I have a little bit of anxiety. And to the citizen that did bring that to us, thank you for having brought that to us. And I'm sorry that it didn't get acted upon sooner. So to that, I also want to say that while I'm trying not to point fingers, oftentimes what I've seen in the, in the school department when it comes to sometimes these projects is things of what my mother used to always call robbing Peter to pay Paul is what happens. They, they have a plan, but then they have an emergency and sometimes they take the money to fix that emergency. And, and I think maybe that's what happened with Stellus. I don't know. I'm not the fly on the wall that sees what happens. But, so again, I don't want to point fingers, but I think oftentimes that is what's happened. As far as the tax cap, I am more in favor of a tax cap than a spending cap. Because the spending cap, while I know there's a person in the audience that's going to tell me I'm wrong, the spending cap is affected by grants because you have to spend the money. And some people will say it's not free money, but it is free money because it's not money that comes from, directly from the taxpayers here. It doesn't get part of your real estate taxes and so on. It doesn't come out of our budget. So that's why I say a tax cap would be better because that's really what the residents of Nashua are looking for is, I don't want you to affect my taxes. And the grant money doesn't affect your taxes, so we would be able to spend that money as it comes in. Even today, when we have something that's a pass-through, we wouldn't be able to do that. We wouldn't be able to take kind of that money and so on. So I would be more in favor of a tax cap. And I said that from day one when I, when I'd heard about the spending cap, when I was running way back when. So thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Clay, I just want to respond to one thing you said about Stellus and the constituent that came in June and mentioned there was a problem there. In July of 2024, an outside contractor came in and inspected that field and said, it looks like it's going to need to be done, but it's okay to use right now.
Exactly.
Okay, so I just wanted to clear that up.
And I apologize, I should have said, I should have made that comment. I did write it down. That July, it was, it was reported as being okay, even though that person had said that. So while that red flag had come up, and I don't know why that person had said that, but yes, thank you, though.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, on September 9th of 2011, I accepted a check from the New England Patriots for, I believe it was $250,000 to help to replace the field at Stellus. Shortly thereafter, I don't know, was that fall or the next spring, the field was replaced. The field, when it was replaced, had a 10-year lifespan under normal use. That field gets extensive use. And it gets tested every year for safety. And as late as July of this year, it was, the test said it was safe. Yes, it was needed to be replaced. The school department, at least the last three years and maybe four, has brought forth a project to the Capital Improvements Committee to replace the field. It never got a high priority. It never made it to the budget. So when it didn't make this year's budget, the Board of Education in July transferred the replacement of the field to the Joint Special School Building Committee, like they do with most of their large projects. And I immediately went to the mayor and we've been discussing funding. In a parallel course, we're trying to get the funding lined up, which we've been talking about tonight. But in the interim, we also have a contractor identified and a contract. And as soon as the money's approved, we can start replacing the field. Now, it's not like a rug. You can't just patch it, replace it, or, you know, do it overnight. It's, it's going to take some time. We have to put the people under contract. They have to get the material and all that. So it's in the hands of the Joint Special right now. As soon as we have the funding, the field will be replaced. Hopefully this fall and definitely by early, early spring, if we have the funding. And we can't have the funding without having an exception that we talked about. The other thing is Frank Ylissikas, I knew him very, very well. Over many years, we had lots of discussions about sports. He was a great guy, knew him very well. Also, we also lost recently Greg Landry, as he was, as Alderman just mentioned. Greg and I were good friends and classmates. I had most of my lunches during my four years of high school at Elm Street with Greg. When I was in the Navy, I met him several times in California and Puerto Rico and had a lot of good times. And he was a great guy and a great family. And I, I'm going to, he's going to be missed. So just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Recognition period.
Madam President.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. With your permission, may I speak? Comments to the mayor, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, you were spot on on exactly what happened at the New Hampshire House. It was one of the most shameful things I've seen in 18 years of serving as a state representative. When the spending cap came about, I think it went to an election or vote. But I don't know if that would be done today. So what's the next best way to sneak something underneath the covers? Bring it up before the state legislature. Where people from Berlin, Landau, far away, including the beer bison and whatever else we get out there, voted by party lines for the spending cap, not for the whole state. This was singly bullseye target Nashua. Terrible, terrible. So whether the people want it or not, it should go to a ballot where it can be properly, you know, portrayed, people can make a decision. But it was 26 state representatives, 27, excuse me, state representatives, corrected by the Honorable Clay, that were against this. But most of our comments from the podium fell upon deaf ears. You know, so keep that in mind, people. This was like a back door for the wolf to come in. What should have been done was it should have been put on the ballot to decide if we wanted to revisit it or not. That's what happened in the beginning. It's what should happen in the end. And it's kind of, thank you, Alderman Clay, for mentioning, you know, the garages and different things like that. If we're concerned about the playing field at Stellus Stadium, then why aren't we equally concerned about the parking garages? What will happen to the downtown, I ask you, if we had to close those garages? Would there be enough parking spaces? Will we hear an outcry from the business-type of community, the business community? I think we would. Now, the trouble is, being chairman of infrastructure, it's nice when you build something. They take your name, they put it on the plaque, and you could put it on the side of the building. And future generations, O'Brien could walk by and they could laugh at it and say, that was great grampy. But the thing is, where is the whole thing in fixing the garage? Not really. But it's a project that is definitely needed to be done. And it's been on the back burner for a while. So if we're concerned about things put on the back burner, the garages is definitely one of them. Okay? And we're not catastrophic yet. But when concrete, pre-stressed concrete fails quickly, let's, you know, get going before it does get catastrophic. And then other things that the city needs. So I would say my Infrastructure Committee is all in favor of this, you know, to get this particularly done, and the mayor is correct. You know, being an owner of your house, if the people want to come, you know, have some concerns. Well, you paint your house, don't you? Or you side it or something like that to keep the structure going. The city has to do the same thing with the facilities that are underneath our belt. So please, if that comes up, anything with the garages, I hope you join with me and support that. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Recognition period. There is none. Tonight, we have a presentation of the Riverfront Project. And that will be presented to us by Economic Development Director Liz Hanum.
Thank you for being here.
Hi. Liz Hanum, Economic Development Director. And I have with me John Vancor, who is our project manager from Hayner Swanson as well. So any technical questions, I'm sending it over to him. So I'll keep this fairly quick. But thank you for inviting me. I thought I would take a moment to just remind everyone why we do these kinds of placemaking projects. There are an incredible amount of economic benefits to placemaking, which is activating spaces, making them beautiful, and using them in a, in a way to build economic output, essentially. So every time we spend money on a sidewalk, that's a business that looks better and people will spend more money, stop in, things like that. So something like the Riverfront Project, we're hoping to hit all of these, all of these potential benefits. Workforce attraction and retention, especially with the rise in remote work. The new generation of workers choose the place they want to live and then find a job there or remotely. So we want to be a place where people want to live. Business attraction and retention, obviously, are really important. When we want to retain businesses that, that need workers, they want to have a place that, that there are readily available workers. So property values go up when we invest in placemaking. Neighborhood engagement and activity go up. And you can read more tourism connectivity. So this particular project is going to be connecting Main Street all the way down to the Mine Falls eventually and up to BAE. So we're, we're just doing quadrant two at the moment, but that, that will be essentially a two-and-a-half-mile loop all the way through the downtown area. So, and I just love this upward spiral of investment in enhancement of places. So that's, that's one of my favorite kind of graphs, graphics. So I'll just give you a quick history. The TIF District, which is our funding mechanism for this, was established in 2003. So we are using that to pay for the bonds that will pay for this project. The TIF Advisory Board was established just the year after that. And that group is a volunteer group that we work with to make decisions about this, this riverfront project, whether it gets expanded in the future to do more projects. That group will be kind of the first level of approval before it comes to this board. The master plan was approved in 2018, which includes, this, this was from the study done in 2017. And so we're focused very specifically on the boxed area there. We had a little pandemic in between when the 21 million was approved and construction started this past May. So we did have to figure out how to fit our much larger project. Once, once inflation happened, the project was more expensive than, than what we had anticipated. So we did have to level out and figure out what we could fit that was worth it and exciting and could still bring the economic benefit. So I'll, I'll show you some of the renderings here now. But we are anticipating completion in fall of 2025. The weather is going to be hopefully working with us to make that happen. But as of right now, fall of 2025. So Main Street will be on your left here. So that's the sidewalk on Main Street into Bicentennial Park. So those are the improvements there. And we will have created kind of an entertainment space, seating wall, just kind of a cutesy little, kind of secret garden off of Main Street almost. And then boardwalk from Bicentennial over the river, past Four Water Street and down into La Parc de Renaissance. So as you'll see, it kind of continues to the, from the left. Past Four Water Street, there'll be a small parking area, a big lawn in the middle there, kind of in the very center where that little section of trees is. You can't see it very well in the rendering, but that is La Dame, the statue of the mill girl. We've kind of created the whole park around that statue. She's boxed up at the moment, so she's not moving at all. I know that was a big concern early on in the process. But then we've got an amphitheater with the lawn area, kind of a stage front and a pavilion at the moment. And then the, the boardwalk will continue throughout that, that whole area. So it will connect. And then, oh, this is just another rendering of that from Four Water Street area. So this will be kind of the, the front view. So we'll have kind of seated amphitheater. And the pavilion will be lit. We worked with a artist, sort of locally, sort of. There'll be a mural along that left wall, the retaining wall there. And they'll look onto Clock Tower. So I think it'll be a really nice kind of sound system, the way that we've placed it. And just a night rendering of that so you can see what, what it'll look like on 4th of July or some evenings when we do performances in that space in the future. And then we've actually completed the ADA ramp, which is the first project that we've done as part of this. So it will continue down Clock Tower and up to the Clotton Mill Transfer Bridge, as you saw. The first part of that is the ADA ramp, which is now open. And then it will continue down past Greeley House. Let's see, there we go. And around the substation there. So this is just a rendering. Unfortunately, we did have to get rid of the dock as part of that post-pandemic construction values went up exceedingly. And it was going to be really hard with the, the water levels to work with anyway. So, so that, we'll have a screening. So we'll have a screening, a screen around the substation, because it's not a pretty view. And then the boardwalk will go over the cove. And then, oh, there is the actual screen that we have chosen. So this is just a construction document at the moment. But that'll show you what it's going to look like. It's supposed to kind of represent reeds for the water. And, there we go. Okay, so construction is underway. We started in May, as I mentioned. And we are probably about 25% to 30% completed. We've got almost all of the pillars in that will hold the boardwalk. As you can see, there's, we've got lots of cranes down there right now. We've got a barge. I don't know if you can see the barge in one of these. Okay, so it's in the middle there. Oh, there we go. There's the barge. So they put a crane on the barge and then drill from there, which is pretty exciting. That's actually a value engineer that they came up with. So hopefully, we'll see some credit there, maybe. But the boardwalk will continue kind of around this area here. So the beginning of the amphitheater is in. That's the lowest level of the stairs, so we're building up from there. The walkway is in as well to continue the boardwalk. And then this is Bicentennial Park, which has just been dug out. So, and I think, yep, this was from yesterday. I just added this photo in this morning. They have now put in the cheek wall forming. And I think they poured this morning for the concrete for that wall. So it's moving very quickly. And you can see the boardwalk behind it there. So that is ready as well. It just has to have railings and boards. So we're moving along very quickly. Oops. So money, which I know is important. So of the $21 million bond, we have 17 million in contracts right now, just slightly above 17 million. We've spent about $5 million of that 17 million. And the rest of our contracts get us to that 17 million. So we have anticipated spending another almost 12 with those contracts. So the contract is 17 million, and it includes everything so far, including, we did have to do some Water Street retaining wall repair that we didn't anticipate. So that was a new project. And those, the ADA ramp and the retaining wall are completed at this point. So we are continuing with those other services until we're done with the project. So we, as of right now, we have $4 million kind of sitting there waiting. However, we do have some anticipated change orders. So these change orders, some of them, we actually are receiving as we speak this week. But this is what we have so far that we know about. And we don't see a whole lot of other things coming yet. I always want to caveat that. But for right now, we have about $1 million in anticipated change orders, which would bring us to just over 18 million in spending so far. The bridge repair, we did not anticipate. But the other, you know, we found, one of the things we found was an old foundation of a building, because the water, the Riverfront used to have all buildings all down it. So we found a, as you find stuff, the geotechnical support is continuing because we keep finding things underground. We had to change, modify some of our plans. Because we found some of those old foundations, we've had kind of lots of different things come up. Some of the grading issues around the statue, we fixed. So we're continuing to see some of these things. But this is fairly decent. I think I'm pretty happy with where we're at right now at this point in the construction. So you'll also see projects that we have not yet contracted. So we have two of the projects that we have not yet started. And that's the Clock Tower Walkway. Basically, from the pavilion, what will be the pavilion, to the bridge. And then from the ADA ramp by Greeley House to that boardwalk across the cove there. So those are the two projects that we haven't yet started. So we've got essentially just under $3 million to do those two projects. And then I would love to add some gateway signage on the Main Street side to kind of add a little beacon to people that this is here and you should use it, and it's really exciting. So we've got kind of three potential projects that will eat into that $3 million space there. So one of them is, this is a rendering of one of the projects that we haven't yet started or haven't yet contracted, is just kind of landscaping and things. So we're not anticipating a huge amount for those three projects. So we should, as of right now, should have a little bit of wiggle room for this project. So that, I hope I was pretty quick in that. I know you've got lots of stuff to do tonight. But any questions at this point?
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Good progress so far. Looking forward to seeing how it's finished. You alluded in your presentation about $21 million. I was going through, and I noticed that back in '21, there was a resolution passed for $21 million. I don't see it in our budget, under our debt service. And the only bond that I see assigned to this was a bond that was issued back in 2015 for $493,000.
Right.
It did mention in the resolution that the $21 million bond was going to get sold in '23, '24. I just don't see it.
Yes.
Obviously, you alluded to it, so it's there.
Correct. Yep. So we actually just did the evaluation. So we're selling it this month. So we're, and we decided to only sell 14 million as of right now. So the bond will be sold in the next month or so for 14 million. And then we'll do the other seven in the following year.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
There is some, I understand, some additional streetscaping that is being done on the Water Street adjacent to that. And then there were some concerns, I think, about that Water Street itself. Is that work done? Is it going to affect the park construction?
I guess the Water Street, the Public Works Project, that's the, I guess, I'm not sure which.
There's a couple of things. There was one that was supposed to be, I think, Mechanic Street into Water Street. Water Street was supposed to be reversed. And I thought those were underway. We approved the reversal and everything. But then there were also issues with the actual structure that were being addressed?
Yes. Okay. So it is the project I'm thinking of. So that project is about to go out to bid. So that is a Public Works Project that will likely start in the fall. And it should be done around the same time that this project is completed. It should not have any effect on the Parc de la Renaissance. As, we won't, we won't be having people visit the park until after they're completed. But so yes, the Water Street Project is going to be underway later this year.
Okay. I wasn't thinking people were going to visit using that road. I was thinking more like the road might be offline. Would that affect construction? If you have to pull things off of the overpass, for example, or change it, then how would that affect anything?
Yes. So we have anticipated that that's happening. So as of right now, we have a plan to move everything around. And we've been working with some fantastic contractors that are really flexible and are really willing to work together. So I don't see any anticipated issues with that. They've been great at rescheduling around each other. This is kind of a Tetris game right now that we're playing anyway. So, and they know that, and are really fantastic. It's Moore's Landscaping and Sea and Shore Drilling. They've been fantastic to work with so far.
And I presume we're coordinating closely with Clock Tower, the Veterans Program, the building full of lawyers that are all next to it?
Yes. Yep. So we have regular communication with them, understanding. And hopefully, we'll get even better with the Cotton Mill side, I think. We've, we missed, we missed the boat a little bit on the beginning of construction, just because we were kind of in the process of changing over staff right then. And so I think we had a couple of complaints about noise at the very beginning of the project. But we got rid of the noise, one, or the constant noise. But two, we had a, we've been building a much better communication system with the Cotton Mill Apartments there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All set. Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation this evening. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Special and Regular Board of Alderman Meetings of September 11th, 12th, and 24th, 2024. Accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Sam Durfee, Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman, petition for street discontinuance, portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right of way. And from Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, regarding Resolution R24098, Invest New Hampshire Demolition Grant, request for first and second reading.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have nine people who have signed up. First will be Matt Sullivan.
Good evening, Board members. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director. I wanted to just take a moment to speak to R2498, which is on your agenda for consideration this evening as a new piece of legislation. Specifically, R2498 contemplates the acceptance of a grant from the Invest New Hampshire Demolition Program in the amount of $232,610. You may remember that this grant program has actually been considered recently by the Board of Alderman for the Mohawk Tannery Project. This is a grant program that involves no municipal match, but actually grants funds directly to the municipality, who then subsequently grants those monies out to an entity performing demolition for the purposes of affordable housing. Specifically, the proposal contemplated here is the redevelopment of the Gateways Community Services property at Four Beard Street, which has received both zoning and planning board approval for the demolition of the existing structure and reconstruction of a nine-unit building consisting of one-bedroom units, both for workforce and for actually the Gateways clientele. One of the interesting things about this grant program is that these are ARPA-funded, this is an ARPA-funded program, and therefore, timeliness is critical. And so we received a request from the state of New Hampshire to accept these monies over the next 10 days. As a result, I have made the request, and I've included the memo within the packet requesting first and second reading consideration of this this evening in light of that timing constraint. I do want to note for the record, in light of several of the conversations so far this evening, that this has already been contemplated within the budget, the fiscal 2025 budget. And so it's really just acceptance of the grant. Appropriation is not necessary. I know that Sandy Pelletier, the president and CEO of Gateways, is also here this evening. I believe she's signed up for public comments subsequent to me. She'd be happy to answer any questions about the project. But I want to thank the board for their consideration of both the legislation, the first and second reading, and certainly continued support of affordable housing for those most vulnerable across the city of Nashua. And I'm happy to answer any questions at the time you actually consider the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Pelletier.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Chair President, and Board Members, Board of Alderman members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity this evening. As Matt mentioned to you, this is a major project for Gateways Community Services. Gateways has been a nonprofit here in Nashua, New Hampshire, for over 40 years. I'm their longtime executive. And we've been blessed to have an incredible collaboration with the city of Nashua. Gateways serves over 2,800 individuals, children and adults with developmental disabilities and elders in need of long-term care. Gateways also owns 13 properties, one on Canal Street, and many group homes in the region. This was a real opportunity to work in collaboration with the city of Nashua to look at our property on Four Beard Street, which is near downtown, has availability to busing, and ability for individuals to walk to their jobs, and opportunity to shop, do pharmacy needs, whatever. Our intention is to support individuals with developmental disabilities who can live semi-independently and also have some ability to place staff in the building to help support them. This is a unique project and one that's getting a lot of recognition, both at the state level, the city level, and at the federal government level. So I thank you for this opportunity. Welcome any questions. But again, this is just the testimony to the kind of partnership Gateways has had with the city of Nashua for many, many years.
Thank you very much. No questions? If we do, we take it up during the legislation. Thank you, Sandy.
Laura Cahoon, 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm here tonight to say no to R24089. Mayor Donches, you may not realize this, but most residents realize that you and some of the board members seem not to have the virtue of being able to tell the truth. And I hope residents remember your lies in the next election. It seems that a lot of residents came out tonight to talk. So Alderman O'Brien's comment at the budget meeting about listening to the peanut gallery, he'll just have to sit there and suffer. Remember, we pay your salaries. First, the total budget for 2025 is up 10.71% and not the 3.75% that Mayor Donches told the residents. Mayor Donches may have failed math, but most residents have not. And realize that when your last budget was 412 million and you bring it up to 456.6 million, that's an increase of 10.71%. When you increase the city buildings budget by 121%, and the community services budget by 170, 117, just to name a few departments, residents know the budget is going up a lot more than 7.75%. And you may want to override the spending cap of 45 million. Well, I can tell you, as a resident, I'm saying no. Enough. The city needs to cut some of their spending, like some of the Riverwalk, we don't need. Mayor Donches, you have increased the city of Nashua's budget by 56.53% since 2017. And taxpayers have fed up. Mayor Donches, you have also increased the city of Nashua's debt. You know mortgages that the taxpayers have to take out for the city from 474 million in 2017 to 633 million in 2025. The payments on this additional bond is almost $11 million in yearly payments. Then that is an increase of 33.53%. And that's not counting this $21 million bond you're now going to put through for the Riverwalk. It appears that you are driving the young residents out of Nashua because they cannot pay the high property taxes nor the high rentals. If this board votes to increase the spending cap, it will be like kicking the taxpayers while they are down. And Nashua taxpayers will remember. Mayor Donches, all these figures are on your website if you want to look at them. Thank you.
David Scolera.
Hello, David Scolera, Two Paddington Place. Not going to accuse anyone here of lying, but I will say there were a lot of mistruths that were set earlier. So I'll just give you some truths. Mayor Donches, you said that Stelo Stadium is the primary care of the school department. That was a quote. Article 2, Section 215.4 of the Nashua Code says that Stelo Stadium is under the control of the Parks and Rec Department. It can't even be rented out by the school department. It's excluded from their rental property. It has to go through Parks and Recs. I know this. I used to run Nashua Pal Force. We had to go through Parks and Recs to rent it and for all of its maintenance requests. The BOE does not have a revolving budget. They can't make capital expenditures. I have the last three years and four GMAX test results. I got them from DPW, not from the Board of Education. It's the DPW and the Parks and Recs that manage Stelo Stadium. Now, as Ms. Cleese said, on 6/11, June 11th, I was here and I brought to the Board of Education meeting the fact that there were issues with Stelo Stadium. It was brought to, the Board of Education brought it or voted in January to bring it to the JSSBC. It wasn't until July that the JSSBC brought it up. I wonder why. Maybe they were taught, talked about it in June by a resident, myself, that came to talk about it. But let's talk about more facts. But let's talk about more facts. On April 6, 2023, this is the CIP for fiscal year '24, this was prioritized, for some reason, as a C1, but it says it is now at the end of its service life. There are drainage issues in several areas. The most recent GMAX testing, a measure of service hardness, yielded very poor results. That was on April 6, 2023. On July 15, 2024, after it was brought to JSSBC and another test was done, it said the field tested at an average of 184. This is near the limit of safe play. Certain test locations on the field are over 200, which is unsafe. So President Willshire, it was not safe in July when it was tested. It should have been shut down then. The GMAX 200 is not a passing score. It's when you risk, as the experts and the industry folks say, life-threatening injuries. In fact, 80 to 120 is optimal. 165 is considered dangerous when the field should be fixed. And finally, regarding dollars, there should be a maintenance program put into place for this field. It should be more like $200,000 a year. As Alderman Dowd said, this is not normally used. It's used by three high schools, about 24 varsity teams, two youth sports programs. It should be about $200,000 per year and replaced every eight years. BG, who is also a victim in this, should actually probably be paying more than they are as well, if they're going to be paying about 15%. But a lot of untruths here. This is a travesty about the finger-pointing that's going on. This has nothing to do with the Board of Education. This is all on this Board's responsibility.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Wyner Bennett for 02 Amherst Street. I represent Playlock Holdings LLC, which is the prospective developer of the Mohawk Tannery Project. Just briefly, there are four items before you tonight for final approval regarding the project, one of which, and the first of which you'll see, is the petition for street discontinuance. That's a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way that becomes integral to the project. It's been contemplated in the master development agreement the Board approved, as well as the purchase and sale agreement that the Board approved for that four-and-so acres. There are three resolutions also before you, 24-086, which pertains to a release of a portion of the sewer trunk linesman along the Nashua River. That is a component of the land that will become the containment parcel and is fundamental to allowing the environmental containment parcel to be utilized. Secondly, is 24-087, which is somewhat of a technical step to underpin the purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the right-of-way portion I referenced regarding the street discontinuance. And the last is R 24088, which is to enable sewer permit fees for the project to be paid incrementally on a building-by-building basis. All four of these have favorable recommendations from the Committee on Infrastructure. The petition actually had an amendment that was processed with the committee, which I believe you'll see in your packets as the amended language. We would respectfully request a favorable, favorable consideration of these four items. And just lastly, Madam President, we have appreciated the time this Board has given this project, time you've spent allowing us to present various presentations regarding the project, the efforts and the due consideration and thoughtful deliberations you've made on a variety of matters even before this evening. Thank you.
Brad Tibum.
My name is Fred Tibum, 24 Cheyenne. I'm the original author of the spending cap. I prepared a chart, which I think will illustrate just how badly this city is mismanaged. It is really badly mismanaged. I'll send out somebody's chart this way. Hopefully, it could put us in a minute. It shows you just how much spending is done outside the annual budget. It's astounding. Now, nothing burns me up more than listening to Mayor Donches misrepresent the cap and misrepresent what happened in 2021 before the state legislature, as well as all the Clee, all of O'Brien. They never read the law to you, do they? They just talk and say how bad it is. Well, I met with Mayor Donches a week ago when it fell on deaf ears. I prepared a briefing for him. He was not interested in listening to the briefing. But just keep it very simple, because I only have a few minutes here. The quote from the state law that ever said, "Made such a mess." The key statement is, "All towns or city charters which have been adopted, revised, or amended before 5/7/2011 to include a tax or spending cap of any kind are hereby endorsed, ratified, validated, legalized, and are fully enforceable." That's RSA 49B1328. What that says is, the cap was grandfathered. I know it was, because I wrote that date, working with the House Committee and the Senate Committee. It's clear, the cap was grandfathered. Now, why are grants and face values of bonds that haven't even been sold yet appear in the supplemental budget? They don't appear, at least the bonds don't appear in the annual budget. It's a complete misrepresentation. It's sponsored by Olin Bolton, who totally misrepresented the cap.
30 seconds.
Totally misrepresented the cap.
I'm not an Alderman.
The law, no, sir, you're a city attorney, and misrepresent these people with the law.
Yes, you refer to me as Alderman. I'm correcting you because you're wrong.
Clearly, clearly, the cap was grandfathered. The cap never carried grants. The cap never carried face values of bonds. The cap basically looked at the annual budget. As you can see, your time is up. There are very few dollars in supplemental budgets, and before 2010, there was never a supplemental budget.
Your time is up, Mr. Tibum. Thank you. Lori Ordolano.
I want to just start my stop watch. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. A couple of things. You know, I come to this chamber enough to say that I'm concerned about the hyperbole, omissions, and misrepresentations I continue to hear and hear on a regular basis. I had a lot of reservations about what I was hearing about the field at Stellos, and in comes a gentleman with facts and contracts and inspection reports that gives us the real answers. I came here a few weeks ago, and we talked about assessments. Much of what was said here about the contract and the new statistical update was not factual and not correct. That letter did not go out correctly. We had a contract that specified the location of the data needed to be in there, a call-out to the RSA on how to appeal, and a bait needed to be in there. The mayor and the assessing office and the Board of Assessors would approve that letter and know when it went out. When I got emails from KRT in 2018 and Vision in 2022, I have the emails that went between the mayor, the assessing staff, and everyone else that would communicate on that. So is there a problem?
Yes, this is not on the agenda. What you're talking about is not on the agenda.
Okay, I'm just talking about misrepresentation. So let me jump, jump over to R 24089. So Stelo Stadium was on the agenda, and I'm really concerned about what I heard with Stellos. And I don't think we get factual information from this Board and from the leaders of this city. Omissions, hyperbole, and misrepresentations is the standard dialogue here. Regarding 089, I'm not a supporter of it, and the reason why is I don't think it was properly vetted at the Budget Review Committee. I went to that meeting. There were only five people in attendance. There were supposed to be seven. There was only the finance office there, not Director Cummings or the mayor. There's been a new letter put out by Director Cummings that was never vetted by the Budget Review Committee. And I think you want to have seven people there, and I think you want to have all the parties there to have a discussion. When I came to that meeting and I spoke and gave public comment, I said I wanted the five people there to really lean in and ask questions, and so that I could understand something that was complex. I heard one individual ask questions. I saw another individual work closely on their computer, and three of the sponsors were in that meeting, Lori Willshire, Mike O'Brien, and Rick Dowd.
30 seconds.
And none of you spoke and gave any information to your constituents on why you supported this. There was dead silence. I think this, please send this back to the Budget Review Committee. Give it another chance to really be vetted with the whole committee, with the right players there. I think it would be worthwhile. Thank you.
Paula Johnson.
My name is Paula Johnson. I live at 15 Westbourne Drive. I'm against R-24-089 because I sat on this board, and we adhered to that spending cap completely, and the city didn't fall apart, and we did everything that we had to do. But what is shameful, I want to use Alderman O'Brien's words, what is shameful is that this Board does not listen to its constituents here. And the mere fact that priorities, what is the priorities? I took pictures of this Riverwalk. Well, if we have parking garages that's falling apart, then we need to do that before Riverwalk and spend all that bond money. Oh, and let's talk about Stelo Stadium. I was on the board, and it got brought up many times. Stelo's about the field. What the hell happened here? That this wasn't taken care of? That's a priority, and yes, Public Works, Parks and Recs did take care of the field. Everything went through them. But we talked about it on the board. We knew Shawn Smith came before us, and that's when I was on the board, back in 2023. Said that the field is going to have to be replaced. We have issues here. So what happened between here, there, and everywhere? That, to me, is more important than this Riverwalk downtown. We're going to bring businesses in, we're going to do this, but we have those frickin' barriers that takes up parking spots downtown. So where is my money going? My taxes increased 22%. My assessment went up this year. My husband and I are senior citizens. I don't qualify for the exempt, and I will bring that in. It's unfortunate that I had, last April, I had another death in my family, and that threw me off, and I just didn't do anything that I said I was going to do. But I'm going to bring this in, showing other communities, take a look at single and married differently, which this city doesn't. All you do is rob us of our money. Don't do what you need to do. $13 million of deferred maintenance in the school district, and then you want to know why Stelo's doesn't get done or anything else doesn't get done in this city? And yet, we have these parks that how many, how many of us are going to use to bring in tourism and businesses? I'm sorry. This is shameful, using O'Brien's words. This is shameful against us.
Monica Chap. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Hi, Monica Chaput, 78 Avon. I am a resident and I am a landlord. The spending cap needs to stay, okay? All you people sitting here, you're forgetting about all the people that are paying rent. When you put my taxes up, I got to put my renters' taxes up, okay? It's just that simple. I can go to my block, Clee, in her neighborhood, in your neighborhood, I can go to my block, and I can tell you, I can get a signature from everyone there to put this spending cap down, okay? So that's all I have to say.
Communications requiring final approval.
A communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding communication to further explain Resolution R 24089 and seeking special Board of Alderman meeting.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we're going to accept this and place it on file. Petitions.
Petition for street discontinuance, portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way.
Point of order, please, point of order. Don't we need final approval on that communication? Don't we need to vote on that?
No.
Not in the communication.
No, because it says here that we need to make a motion, and the motion carried or failed.
We have that coming up further in the agenda. There'll be a motion.
It just says under the communications.
Okay. No. Petition, sorry.
Petition for street discontinuance, portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the petition for street discontinuance, portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way by replacing it with a golden rod copy of recommended amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure. If you have your golden rod copy, the changes are in red.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. This was brought up to the Infrastructure Committee, and we agree wholeheartedly with this amendment.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, now I'll make the motion to grant the petition for street discontinuance, portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way as amended.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
The following appointments by the mayor were Cable Television Advisory Board, Andrew Sonata, reapportment, 547 Amherst Street, Suite 300, Nashua, New Hampshire, with a term to expire January 1, 2027. Cultural Connections, reapportment of Elizabeth Berry, 505 Amherst Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063, term to expire September 30, 2027. Environment and Energy Committee, reapportment of Arden Anita Calla, 15 Taylor Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060, with a term to expire March 31, 2027. Nashville Arts Commission, reapportment of Tina Cassidy, 12 Newcastle Drive, number 10, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060, with a term to expire September 1, 2027.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the September 12, 2024 joint meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the August 26, 2024, and September 19, 2024 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the September 3, 2024 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the September 30, 2024 Penachuk Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 24086, authorizing the release of a portion of an existing sewer easement.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-24-86.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2486 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 24087, authorizing the sale of surplus property.
Alderman Tibbott.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 24-087.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2487 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 24088, authorizing issuance of wastewater service permits upon incremental payment of service, I'm sorry, sewer entrance charge assessments, redevelopment of land in the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment, VMPR Ovalay District.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 24088.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2488 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 24089, approving an exemption for fiscal year 2025 from the charter's limitation on budget increases.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to table R 2489 to the meeting, the special meeting we're going to have on Thursday for further discussion. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
You can't.
All right, sorry.
Right, right, sorry. Motion is to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it.
I think that's just loud.
You want a division? Those who are in favor, raise your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. The ayes have it. R-2489 is tabled until Thursday night.
Second reading of Resolution R-24-092, authorizing Penachuk Waterworks, Inc. to renew and increase its fixed asset line of credit with TD Bank, N.A.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, turn the page here. I motion for final passage of R-24-092.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 2492 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance 024-033, updating the ordinances relative to school safety zones and school zone flashing speed limit signs.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of O-24-033.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance 2433 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R-24-098, relative to the acceptance of $232,610 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Invest New Hampshire Demolition Grant Program and approval for the city to grant said funds to Area Agency of Greater Nashua, DBA Gatewoods Community Services for demolition of Ford Beard Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Moran, and myself. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of Resolution R-24-098. I'd like to speak briefly to it.
Alderman Lopez.
There was a communication, there was public comment made regarding this. It is a partnership with Gateways, which does a lot of community good in our, well, a lot of good work in our community. And it's for a housing program that needs more rapid review than we would be able to do with the Human Affairs Committee. If we didn't do the second reading, we'd have to go to Human Affairs and then we'd have to come back to the Board of Aldermen. And because of the different organizations involved, they don't have the time to spare, basically. So I was approached by Director Sullivan earlier this week. I will not be anyone who slows down an affordable housing program, especially for group homes and people with developmental delays. So I urge the board to consider this second reading.
Motion is for a second reading. Alderman Cle.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is for the second reading. This is not for the final approval.
Right.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Motion is for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R-24-098, relative to the acceptance of $232,610 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Invest New Hampshire Demolition Grant Program and approval for the city to grant said funds to Area Agency of Greater Nashua, DBA Gatewoods Community, excuse me, Community Services for demolition of Ford Beard Street.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage.
Motion is for final passage. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I sit on the planning board and this did come in front of the planning board and I want to say that when they brought the plan forward and discussed it and so on, I think it's a good plan. I think it's going to help. Gateways is very strong in our community. And one of the things that I was quite impressed with is as part of this are units for onsite staff. It's very important that this is, as well as for DD patients, as well as, but to have the onsite staff, which means that there's going to be somebody there. And I found that it was well thought out and it's an incredible program. So I think it's something that, you know, in hearing that because of the way the funding is coming through, we need to put this through, I don't feel like we're rushing it through because I think it was well thought out. So I think it's just we're rushing through to make sure that it's happened, but I want the public and everybody to know that this project was well thought out. It went through the planning board. It's gone through all the processes that it needs to go through. So planning and everything has happened. We're just pushing through the funding and the process to get it through so that they can get their money through. But all of the steps and everything through engineering and everything has happened the way it needs to happen, so.
Further discussion?
The public has spoken too. I'm sorry. I just want to get through that. The public did get to speak, so thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Tibido.
I just had a question regarding the grant. I'm just curious if this is a federal pass-through to the state of New Hampshire, if this is truly a New Hampshire-based grant.
Director Sullivan can answer your question.
Thank you, Madam President. The answer to Alderman Tibido's question is that these are federal pass-through monies being granted through the Bureau of Economic Affairs to the city of Nashua. They are pass-through dollars.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Further discussion? Motion is for final passage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Resolution 2498 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R-2499, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, American Federation of School Administrators, AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, and related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Govea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, Alderman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-24100, authorizing the merger of Penachuk East Utility, Inc. with and into Penachuk Waterworks, Inc., and the merger of Pittsfield Aqueduct Company, Inc. with and into Penachuk Waterworks, Inc., and other related actions.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Penachuk Water Special Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-24101, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a settlement agreement by and among the city of Nashua, Penachuk Waterworks, Inc., Penachuk East Utility, Inc., Pittsfield Aqueduct Company, Inc., and all other parties to docket number DW 23-101 before the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Penachuk Water Special Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-24102, relative to the transfer of $26,809 from Department 142 Woodlun Cemetery to Department 140 Pinewood Cemetery.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-24103, establishing a Nashville Milliard Dog Park Expendable Trust Fund funded by donations.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the Resolution R-24104 that was received after the agenda was prepared. Copy of that is on your desk, I'm sorry.
First reading of Resolution R-24104, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $1,500,000 of assigned fund balance into capital project activity, Stello Stadium, turf field replacement, protective field cover, and other renovations.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Govea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, October 28, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance O-24-035, changing the day of rescheduled Board of Aldermen meetings.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Ordinance O-2436, relative to seasonal road closures and elimination of certain on-street parking for extended outdoor dining and other non-vehicular use.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance O-2437, amending the land use code regarding municipal changing signs.
Additional sponsors? Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and schedule a public hearing during the Planning and Economic Development Committee on Tuesday, November 19, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber. Period to general public comment. Tonight we have Nick Scolera.
Hello again, Board. My name is Nick Scolera, Two Paddington Place here in Nashua. Before I get started with what I usually would want to be saying, I just wanted to bring up and bring to everyone's attention, including the communities, partnering with 350 Nashua, relaunching of the 350 Chapter here in Nashua, there's going to be a community cleanup in conjunction with the Arlington Street Community Center this Saturday, 11:01. I would love to see any and everyone come out, picking up some litter here in the city, trying to make our city a greener place. Also, going forward, talking about Stello's again. Me and buddies have worked through the Public Works and Department of Public Works many summers while we were in college. I know the people who work Stello Stadium. They are not Board of Education employees. They are DPW employees. It's really just that simple. Onto what I am going to be talking about today. Yesterday, we marked one year of endless bloodshed in Gaza and now continuing throughout the Middle East, and it only proves to be getting worse. The strategy by our federal government has failed hopelessly, and it's hard to find hope these days. It's hard to find hope for my friends that are still living in the West Bank, not knowing if they will have another year in them. And we here in the United States are complicit. We are complicit through silence. We are complicit monetarily and through resources. And there's complicity through silence here in this board. Silence since our resolution has been tabled, calling for a ceasefire and limiting arms to the rogue Israeli state, as we have proven to see they are more rogue than even we thought. As I said, this goes back to money and resources. President Biden has mobilized 40,000 troops to the Middle East, two aircraft carriers waiting in the region just in case, I guess, in case our strongest ally, our supposed strongest ally decides to launch a regional war. Billions of dollars have been sent, our tax dollars have been sent to continue the ruthless bloodshed of men, women, and children. Billions of dollars that could have been put to use here in our home. We have seen the devastating effects of climate change here this past week and now coming this week. Hurricanes Helene and Milton have proven that our infrastructure in our country is not fit for the global rising temperatures and rising sea levels that our own commerce has created. Instead of sending billions of dollars to FEMA, we are now in a FEMA shortfall of nearly $9 million, announced the day after we sent $9 million in additional funding to Israel. Usually a little weird how that comes out. Those tax dollars go to kill men and women and children like you and I. They go to kill people like Hush Kamal Abba Jawad, who is a U.S. citizen from Dearborn, Michigan, who is going to visit his ailing mother in the south of Lebanon, who was killed by his own tax dollars through an Israeli strike on his family home. People will continue to die as we do nothing. Over 2,000 now in Lebanon, most estimates are saying over 200,000 in Gaza. How many more? I struggle for words at this point because I think of people like Kamal Abba Jawad and how his federal government has done nothing to protect him.
Thirty seconds.
And it makes me wonder if my city would do anything if I got killed. It makes me wonder if I was visiting my friends in the West Bank, as I hope to do again someday, in the village of Beetzahor in the outskirts of Bethlehem. If an Israeli raid comes through and kills me and my friends, will this city do anything? The past six months have proven they will not. We have plenty of time to do unanimous police funding, unanimous things throughout our city, but we cannot even come together, have a single conversation about human rights. Thank you.
Dave Scolera?
Hello again, Dave Scolera, Two Paddington Place. If you remember, the last meeting, I was talking about difficulty getting some transparency from the city regarding where we're spending our money. An issue on that was the $63,346,139 of equity securities held by the city of Nashua in the annual comprehensive financial report dated June 30, 2023. At that meeting, Mayor Doncha said that that may have been a mistake. We don't have that much money invested in equity outside of the wealth management. The next day, I was told that I couldn't get any more information via email. I had to actually meet with Mr. Perrin in person to get that information. So I was expecting to come in and sit in a boardroom, give a bunch of binders and have to go through that information. No, I was given three documents, two of which I already had, which had been sent to me prior email. Those were the wealth management RBC documents. And then the final was a 10-page Charles Schwab document. Not sure why that just couldn't be emailed to me. But anyway, that added up to $48,288,011. The Charles Schwab document was a trust fund of money market funds, not even equity securities, so that wasn't relevant. So there's still a gap of somewhere around $14, $15 million invested in equity securities that the city of Nashua has yet to disclose to me. Furthermore, and I emailed you this, city of Nashua has a comprehensive financial policies document, of which an investment policy is included, on the website. It's from 2011. That's 13 years old. According to RSA Title III, 41.9, Section 7, the BOA is required to annually review and improve an investment policy. In that investment policy, it states that there are reasons for the city to invest in mutual funds. Mutual funds for domestic, mutual funds in domestic stocks for long-term trusts and for capital reserves. So this is a direct contradiction to what Mayor Doncha stated last meeting when he said the city doesn't invest in the stock market. Well, there's definitely a code that allows it to. And finally, Section 10.8 of that 13-year-old document says that the city treasurer shall provide quarterly reports to the CFO for review, including following a listing of individual securities held at the end of the reporting period with maturity dates and percentage of total portfolio. Where is that report? It's supposed to be a quarterly report issued from the city treasurer to the CFO. It's all I'm asking for. It's $63 million, of which I can add up $48 million of it. And nothing is there. So I suggest that this board convene a committee that brings together BOA members, citizens, financial experts, and someone proficient in ESG investment initiatives to review the city policy and holdings. Thank you very much.
Paula Johnson.
Good evening, Paula Johnson. Again, first of all, I'd like to say I think it's shameful when former Alderman Thibault mentions, called our city attorney an Alderman, and you allowed him to scream at him. That's shameful. He works for us and he needs to control his temper. Also, I just want to say that I think it's shameful that we had a Ward 5 Alderman, a Ward 5 corridor meeting, and not one Alderman at large showed up for that meeting again. This is shameful. It was very disappointing once again that none of you attended the meeting on Tuesday night, October 1, to discuss the West Holler Street corridor. None of you attended the first meeting on February 6, and I emailed all of you then and asked why none of you attended the meeting. Alderman O'Brien responded that he was ill and then Ms. Timmons said she wasn't invited. Approximately 30 people plus attended both meetings. These meetings are important to the residents of Nashua who are impacted by the increased traffic on West Holler Street. The charter school has caused additional traffic and they planned expansion and the traffic will once again increase during morning and afternoon hours. I thanked Alderman Jettie for being at the meeting and I asked where were all the Aldermen and all the women at large. Were they given an invitation? Because I was told they needed an invitation. I want to remind you all, and I'll say it again, when I was an Alderman at large, I attended all these meetings and even if I only could stay five to 10, 15 minutes, my constituents appreciated that I was there because I showed that I cared about their issues. And also, I believe that Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Kelly live in Ward 9, which borders Ward 5. Once again, Police Chief O'Rourke, if you're in a Ward 5, then I, excuse, then you really should be there. If you're a 9 or 5, there you go.
One minute.
He was not, I guess, invited. I'm going to just go through this quickly now. I left a copy for all of you to get later on. We did appreciate- We did appreciate Fire and Rescue for being there, again. I'd like to thank Mr. Hudson, and Mr. husband, and Mrs. Foto. And I'm gonna just kind of end somewhat with this. And like I said at the beginning, none of the Aldermen, Alderwomen who are at large had a problem attending the meeting-
Thirty seconds.
...when it came to voting yourselves a stipend raise of $4,000. You now get $9,000 a year. It becomes apparent that the ones who voted themselves the increase are nothing more than a bunch of self-serving individuals on this board that doesn't care about our taxpayers of this city. Just spend more and more of our money. Our assessments increased once again, as I said before, within the last two years. Mine is now up 22% from two years ago.
Your time is up.
No one cares about our senior citizens, and also, I just want to end that. I'd like to give my condolences to the Usikas family, because both my, two of my children were in Mrs. Justikas' class, and I'd like to say Happy New Year to the Jewish community. Thank you.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'd like to address transparency with the city. About a month ago, when John Griffin was here, I addressed the 2011 comprehensive financial report on the website, and I encouraged you to get that updated. He's retiring, he's essentially retired, he's back as a consultant. He, I think, is the one who put that manual together, and it would be a shame for him to leave and not have that manual updated, and I hope you do do that update. A gentleman spoke at the last Board of Aldermen meeting, saying, you know, addressing a right-to-know issue that he was having, came back tonight, we're trying to get records from the city, and mentioned that he's not into all these right-to-know issues that are going on with the city. Well, I agree with him. I'm not into all these right-to-know issues. But on June 13th, I put in a right-to-know to get all the outside counsel legal spending that was spent on a couple of different lawsuits that were running in the city. I anticipated that there was upwards of $600,000 of spending, and I just wanted to get the data. Mr. Cummings had done a presentation in March to the whole board. At that point, there was like 400,000 of spending, but I thought we had crossed a new threshold. I put in a right-to-know on June 13th, asking for the total billing on the case, and also I asked for the trial in April, the invoices that had come in on that. The next, five days later, on the 18th, I asked for Russ Hilliard's, Upton Hatfield's payments for work done on all matters from August of 2022. The city responded on June 13th to my request, saying, this was on June 20th, that they needed until the 28th to get back to me. And then on the 24th, they got back to me, and they gave me nine pages of one contractor's billing for the trial, but they missed the other contractor's billing. And they never answered the first part of my request, which was the total billing for that lawsuit. That was skipped completely.
One minute.
Then they went on and responded on the 27th, saying, the report, the financial report I was looking for, which is just a two-page financial report run with a push button, they would need another month to get this to me. That would have to come on July 17th. On July 17th, I got it. I wrote back on the 18th, or July 18th, I received it, wrote back on the 19th, and said, you never completed the first one correctly, could you please go back and run a report like this for the spending-
Thirty seconds.
...on the whole one. It goes on and on and on, and here we are at 10:07, and I still don't have my records. Three months, and I'm still arguing back and forth with the city. It's nice to hear this gentleman was allowed to come in and meet with Mr. Perrin. I am not, so I play this game of struggle. It's absurd what's going on in the city. For simple financial reports, this is, this is absolutely maddening and so unnecessary. This is why you have litigation issues.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Peggy Anderson.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Peggy Anderson, and my address is 75 Walden Pond Drive.
Thank you.
I bought my condo here two years ago, and I have three concerns about the assessment and one suggestion for how you might make things better. My first concern is the lack of notification about the letters. The homeowners were not given a heads-up that these letters were coming, and there was no indication on the envelope that they were the Nashua assessment document. So a lot of people in my neighborhood picked up the letter on that Saturday, along with all of the ads for the grocery stores, and just threw it in the junk mailbox, because they didn't know what it was. And it, you couldn't tell what it was. So that's my first issue. My second issue is that there are errors that have been found in the data, and as the assessed values get bigger and bigger, the errors become more and more obvious. So in my situation, our townhouse that we bought two years ago, which is 40 years old, was assessed up 33% this year, and this was on top of a 60% increase two years ago. So cumulatively, that's 113% increase on a 40-year-old condo. It's, it's, when I purchased it, it was assessed at 218, and it's now half a million dollars. Now, that doesn't make sense, does it? So that brings me to topic number three, which is, one year of sales data is not enough for you to do this properly. No unit like mine was assessed during the timeframe that you guys did, between April 23rd and March 24th, but I still got a 33% increase. So that, that particular increase is not supported by new sales that happened this summer.
One minute.
Thank you. So we need to figure out what is going on and fix these errors, but that takes time. So my solution that I would offer to you is take more time on this. You could put this assessment on hold for one year, and then you would still meet your two-to-three-year assessment priority that you want to do. You could still use the 22 assessment for the next tax bills that are going out, and then you have more time for transparency, more sales data, and more accuracy.
Thirty seconds.
That's the best outcome for the city and for the homeowners. I hope you will consider this suggestion. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Bradley Conway.
Bradley Conway from Manchester. Good evening, everyone, Free Palestine. We have a resolution here at the City of Nashua that exposes the New Hampshire Federal Delegation's complicity with the genocide in Palestine. This resolution basically tells our federal delegation to stop arming Israel because doing so violates U.S. federal law. It's legal for the U.S. to provide military assistance to a country that violates international law or blocks humanitarian aid into a conflicted area. In September, reports leaked by Pro, or to ProPublica, detailed how the U.S. government's two foremost authorities on humanitarian assistance reported that Israel was deliberately blocking deliveries of food and medicine into Gaza. These leaked documents prove that the Secretary of State Antony Blinken lied to Congress about those reports to keep U.S. weapons flowing to Israel. This weekend, New Hampshire leaders like Sununu, Shaheen, Pappas, Custer, and Hassan issued statements once again proclaiming their unconditional support for Israel. But anyone with half a brain in this state realizes that they were really proclaiming their undying support for white supremacy, American exceptionalism, authoritarianism, religious extremism, and both their corporate and foreign donors. By declaring their continued support for Israel this weekend, Sununu, Pappas, Shaheen, Custer, and Hassan really declared their unyielding support for using starvation, rape, and dehydration as weapons of war, for murdering hundreds of journalists, healthcare workers, teachers, emergency responders, assassinating foreign leaders and their entire families, imprisoning and torturing tens of thousands of Palestinians without charge or trial, and displacing millions from their homes for the idea of Zionist safety. I don't expect New Hampshire's leaders will be swayed by this resolution because, as we can see plainly, the emperor has no clothes. These people are proud white supremacists murderers who see Arab and Muslim death and suffering as a business opportunity. We must be undeterred and cast whatever grains of sand we can find into the gears of their death machine. This means nurturing pro-human, anti-Zionist sentiment at the city level. Zionism is a plan for Western powers to colonize the Middle East. This is not a complicated issue. All men are created equal and are deserving of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Live free or die. Nashua is deeply tied to the U.S. military-industrial complex, which through its complicity with Zionism has deprived millions in Gaza of food, water, life, dignity, freedom, health, and happiness for a whole year. Nothing could be more urgent than putting a stop to this. We have to step up, we have to be brave, we have to take a stand on this issue and save lives right now before it's too late. This is a Nashua issue. This is a catastrophe made possible because of weapons from Nashua, money from Nashua, labor from Nashua.
Thirty seconds.
It's our residents who are being dehumanized. It's people from Nashua who will be fighting in this Zionist war. It's Nashua's federal leaders who are breaking the law to make this possible, and it's Nashua Aldermen who have the power to say it's wrong, but have yet to take preventative action. Please pass this resolution in its current form. Thank you for entertaining us again.
Jeri Ann Garren.
Jeri Ann Garren, 5 Summit Street, Nashua. Concerned parent. I'll start off by saying thank you for your time, but I think that's all I can really say thank you for, and I'm sorry for saying that. We can't say thank you for keeping our children safe while they get to play different sports at this time, because Stello Stadium was taken away when it should have been taken already away. This could have been done. This is something that you knew about in advance and kept the children playing on it until it was finally completely unsafe. If it was replaced in 2011, and it says 10 years, my math, being that I work with elementary school children, that would not make 2024 being shut down appropriate number. Don't you think this is a little ridiculous? The city has the money to do other things. Hmm. But keep saying that we're not supposed, that they weren't supposed to do this. The city chose not to. We can't say that thank you for giving our children the best senior year memories for some of them because you took that away from them by not replacing the turf when it should have been replaced, not waiting until the fall when it's football season, soccer season, what happened to the summer before this? I know you looked at it in July, but it was addressed before this. So imagine the disappointment of all of those Nashua children. They had learned, when they had learned that they didn't get to go to the event that they were planning on. You took that away from them. You took a safe place for teenagers. Is it hard enough to understand? Isn't that your responsibility also as the Alderman? All of the parents pay taxes as well, and yet the city chose not to use the money that was supposed to be in the budget. BG is also involved in that. And what about the money? Well, to me, that seems fraudulent, but I also don't know how anybody, and I will not name names, but how some people can get sleep at night, and knowing that this, they have done this to so many people. It's absolutely disgusting. I'm sorry. I know that at my job, if I drop the ball, then it's children's lives that are affected.
One minute.
And it's not acceptable. So why do you all get to drop the ball, and it's acceptable? Accountability is what needs to be dealt with, and not allow things like this to happen again. Thank you.
Okay, remarks by members of the board. I'm gonna start over here tonight. Alderman O'Brien.
Comments from the board. I would like to say thank you to everybody that showed up Sunday for the firefighters' Memorial Sunday. Unfortunately, this year, we had to put another name on the stone. Lieutenant Jess Wyman. This is a hidden killer to us firemen. You know, you pause, you're overworking, you pause, open it up so you can breathe, and then they close up when you cool down, and you get cancer, and doctors look at you like, ugh. But Jess died of cancer. So being up at the State House, we did pass the law, and it did pass, and so I'm very happy that it came out. So I would like to thank everybody that came. It was, to memorize somebody so recent, more than any other organization in the city. I think there's something like 15 names on that monument. So, thank you all. And then, other news comes in, and it's from the family of Les Blunden. He was on the same litter. That means him and I got appointed the same day together. And Les was fantastic. He knew where every single water line was in the city. We used to call him Big Water, but he would go out, make sure your truck had the proper GPM gallons per minute and everything. Well, sadly, he has just recently passed on. So, and then, with the comment of peanut gallery, I think, I know, I used to watch the Howdy Doody Show. I was in the peanut gallery, so, you know, I understand exactly what it is. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to comment on the statement one of the speakers spoke about the at-large not attending these award functions. However, I just got in from another country. I wasn't here, so, and I'm still tired from that, so I'm just want to say, have I been here on, what day was it? October 1st, which I wasn't? I probably would have had to attend Ward 5 meeting.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you. Echo that, I was working on the West Coast, so I was unable to be physically here in Nashua. While I was on the West Coast, though, I found, went into my office, and I guess this was a convenient thing, and Megan Karen and Director Cummings have this, but the City of Vancouver, Washington, very similar in demographics to us, but maybe 55% larger in population, sends out a quarterly newsletter to its business and residents that includes, you can read this, what will the, this police levy do to taxes, property taxes, and it is a great example of, you know, communicating to the residents ahead of time. And also, you know, you could even include, you know, welcome COO, Director Cummings, whatever his title is, as well, but it's good information sharing that I think would benefit in the future. Obviously, their population is larger, it's much more costly. I am seeing their mayor next week, and I'm gonna ask about the cost of this. They have, and I've reached out to their city manager as well, because I think it's some information that could come back, and the Director Cummings and Megan could have some information about how it's put together, how it's processed, and it might be a benefit to the city later on. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
First, this Thursday, October 10th, at 3:15 at McCarthy Middle School, we'll be holding the ribbon cutting, and given this board's connection to former President McCarthy, I just want to make sure that that is being relayed to any members who might have been traveling. That's this Thursday at 3:15. Second, it is not in our rules that there would be no fact-checking, so I feel like we should at least point out that in the mayor's comments, it was pointed out that in the state agreement and the way that we manage city properties versus school properties, the school board does have to engage the Aldermen in order to do projects or make substantive repairs. Now, the city might be sweeping it, or cleaning it, or raking it, that doesn't necessarily mean we can rebuild it. And this is obvious, because the Board of Education did ask the Joint Special School Building Committee to do it, and we are working on it, as Alderman Dowd pointed out, but they asked us to do it after our fiscal year. So that's why it's also frustrating that we have to entertain the spending cap override to do something that could have been anticipated and discussed, when I, I can speak for myself, I definitely asked multiple times, are there other things on your radar? Because I don't know everything the school board needs to repair, and I watched all of their budget discussion meetings. I don't think they mentioned this, I could be wrong, but we brought it to Joint Special School Building. I know Alderman Dowd is doing everything he can to get it fixed as soon as possible. I am also hopeful that it will be fixed before the follow-up, but this should have been done much earlier. Additionally, it was also brought up as a suggestion that maybe we should take the money from the Riverwalk project and use it to fix the parking garage. The river, sorry, but French Park is a little bit in disarray right now, so I don't think we should stop that in the middle. But it's also, at the beginning of this meeting, we had a nice little presentation, which clearly showed that the Tiff District, that we're drawing the money for the riverfront, doesn't include the Elm Street parking garage. Another point of stress that I've had to manage as Alderman of the downtown area is that parking revenue is going up. There have been plenty of people who are convinced that that will drive away all business downtown, and that that is just another money grab from the mayor who's not even the highest-paid staff member in the city. It's not all about greed. We have known that the buildings need investment. We have known that the parking garages are struggling, the parking department has been telling us this, and we are trying to, in a fiscally responsible manner, figure out how to address those things strategically. If push comes to shove, and we do see a need for immediate repair or preventative action, then I would support it, because I do understand that not only do the businesses need the parking downtown, but residents need it too, and particularly, given that they can't just move somewhere else, given with no- And particularly, given that they can't just move somewhere else, given with no other places to move to, it is important to make sure that they have amenities. So there was a lot of finger pointing done today, and I, it's frustrating to be accused of finger pointing by any people who came here specifically to finger point whenever an attempt is made to correct the record. I think ultimately, the record does stand for itself. Our city does operate and perform at a very high level, and people love living here because of the culture, because of the investments, because of the community. And I think we're all committed to doing that. But I think it's also important to remember that there are more sides, and that just because you're the loudest person in the room doesn't necessarily mean that you're right. I also wanted to make some brief public comments regarding the sentiments expressed by those supporting the Free Palestine movement. The board, I brought to the board the resolution that I had, I had myself worked on, and the board opted to send it back to committee, which I appreciated in the spirit of not just indefinitely postponing it without conversation. But that gesture loses its impact if people don't show up for the discussion. So we are bringing it up again on October 21st at the Human Affairs Committee meeting. I would like any members of the board with any ideas of how to proceed, whether they are complete agreement, complete disagreement, or otherwise, to at least engage in the dialogue so that we can come up with something as a result. If it is the will of the board to completely table this, it'll be over my objections, but at least there will be a conversation, at least there will be an outcome that we all participate in. So please participate in the Human Affairs Committee, or at the very least, forward ideas you have for amendments or specific talking points, so that we don't go back to the full board with nothing new. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I wanted to say thank you to the Nashuans that came out tonight to speak on public comment, regardless of the issue. I think it was good to see some faces that we normally see, but also some new faces. And I can say that a common theme is frustration that's running through the residents out there. In terms of, you know, the Stellos issue, one thing that struck me is, as I watched a lot of the emails go around and press releases and whatnot, you know, the word leadership came to mind. And, I mean, we're all leaders of this city in this room, and I think that to the average layperson, there's 90-some-odd thousand people that live in this city. To most of them, they don't understand the intricacies and org charts and who reports to what. I think that, you know, as city leaders, I think we all have to take a little piece of that. I had a coach used to tell me, you got to eat some of your blame pie. And I think we all need to take a bite of it and own up to it. And, you know, I certainly, in Ward 9, certainly do that. And to the folks that I had sidebar conversations with, as far as, you know, who's responsible or whatever, I basically said, look, I'm a city leader, I own some of it. So I would encourage everybody to do the same. Thanks.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate everybody that came out this evening, too. I was a bit frustrated. I agree with what the previous speaker said, that there is a lot of frustration. But for me, some of it is seeing the, what I would describe as misinformation, rumors, thoughts, things like that. They should have done this, you should have done that, he should have done that. Some people describe it as finger pointing. The point is, is that, you know, this is a big city. It's got a lot of moving parts. And the folks who sit on this, on these boards, on this board, on the Board of Education, the other elected boards, all of our commissions, we do it because we, we love Nashua, we want to see Nashua be its best. Nobody wakes up and says, I want to close Stelo Stadium today, so how can we do that? How can we make the kids suffer? No one says, I want them to play on a terrible field and get hurt and have all these injuries. There's not a single person in the city that says that. Now, what might happen, on the other hand, and this is, you know, again, to what the previous speaker said, is take some ownership of things, is that things sometimes get overlooked for whatever reason. Messages don't get heard. And I think we need to do a better job communicating with one another between the boards. I think we need to do a better job listening to what constituents bring to us. I also think that we need to do a better job with, quite frankly, our communications with our, with our, between the city and those that are asking for information from us. So, you know, I think, I sat here listening to everything, and I was frustrated because while I don't think that it's appropriate to pontificate on what could have been or what should have been, I do think that it is appropriate to hear the frustration in the citizens of this city and take that as a takeaway to say, we have to do things a little bit better, we have to do things a little bit differently. So my hope is that, again, that there is more communication between the city departments, between the boards, so that things like this don't happen in the future, because nobody here intends for that. Nobody wants that to happen. So, again, that, those are my comments this evening. I had other things to say, but quite frankly, they really don't matter in comparison to that. So, thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to echo the sentiments of the previous two speakers, frustration is certainly the sentiment that's going around. And how could any of us in this room not be sympathetic to that? I mean, just take our day-to-day lives and pile it on. And it's unfortunate, but it's perfectly fair to say that the residents of Nashua have had it piled on in recent weeks, had the reevaluations, surprise, Stelo Stadium, $45 million that needs to be exempt from the spending cap. It's a lot to take in, if you're a resident who's paying attention to your tax bill. Maybe you're living paycheck to paycheck. It's a lot to think about. And so I definitely agree that the onus is on us to own that a little bit and to listen to our constituents with an open ear and an understanding ear, because they're going to be angry, and they're going to be frustrated, and it may not be pleasant to hear on the phone, but that's our job, and we really need to take that. I do want to share my appreciation for a couple of constituents, really, in the past week or so. I know we all received an email. There was a speaker who spoke tonight, and again, those same sentiments of frustration, but with some constructive input. I have the fortune of serving on Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, where we have the opportunity to interview everyday citizens who want to help out a little bit more in their city. And to see now, even people who aren't signing up for those commissions or those boards, be offering in earnest constructive input for how we can make this better, how we could alleviate the situation, that can't go unappreciated, especially as we all sit in this circle looking for answers to all these problems. On another topic, I do want to, I didn't want to belabor the point when it came up, but I do want to express my appreciation that this board passed oh 2433 tonight. Amid all the frustration, one of the constant, constant concerns that I'm hearing from folks in Ward 7 and in Crown Hill in particular is speeding. I don't know what's changed in the last few years, but the roadways have become raceways, especially in Crown Hill, and I'm sure in most of your neighborhoods as well. For us, it's Bark Street and it's Ald Street, which I recently learned is a 25. You wouldn't guess it by the signs, because I think there's three. But, and in particular Arlington Street, where we have two community schools. And I know that this ordinance is going to have some notable impact on Arlington Street as it passes in front of the Adult Learning Center and Dr. Crisp Elementary. So I'm very excited to see that coming forward tonight. And finally, last night at Personnel, we had the opportunity to hear from Emily Marticello, whose last name I hope I didn't just butcher, regarding a update to the Nashua Hazard Mitigation Plan, and what timeliness, if any of us are paying attention to the news, with what's bearing down on Florida right now. My parents happen to be right in the path of it and just had their evacuation plan thrown on its head, so hopefully, everything's going to go all right for them. But we'd, we were talking at work today, and, you know, talking about folks that we know down in that area, and looking through some of that document, and it's a big document. Ms. Marticello was keen to remind us that it's 300, 400 pages a couple times last night, but take some time to look through it, because there's a lot of stuff you might not think about. But as we said at work, and really, I think this kind of ties into everything I've been saying here, whether it's natural disasters, man-made disasters, Stelo Stadium, parking garages, you never have a problem until you have a problem. And we got some problems right now, and we're going to have to take them on headfirst. So I just, I want to express my appreciation for that document, share my hopes that everybody that's in the line of that storm gets through it all right. And that's everything I have this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So hearing Alderman Senate reminded me of the meeting last night, and, you know, something that I thought he was going to say, you know, given, you know, the news about what's going on in Florida and, you know, the hurricane that preceded it, you know, that raised havoc in Florida and Georgia and South Carolina and North Carolina. You know, something that, you know, she said, call me Emily, so I'm going to just call her Emily to avoid having to pronounce the last name. But she reminded us that flood insurance is available to everybody that lives in Nashua. Nashua is a, is a, an approved city with FEMA for the National Flood Insurance Program, and that, that, you know, contrary to what a lot of people think, flood insurance is available to us all who live in Nashua. I think a lot of people are confused, because flood insurance is often required by mortgage companies if you live in a flood plain, but not if you're not in a flood plain. But it's available to all of us. So I know, can't remember if it was last year or the year before, there was, I think it was last year, we had a, in Nashua here, we had, you know, a series of severe rainstorms that raised havoc in a lot, you know, a lot of the city, and specifically in Ward 5, along Main Dunstable Road, you know, the brook that runs parallel to Main Dunstable. A lot of those people, you know, that little, that little brook that just kind of trickles most of the time, you know, raised, you know, several feet, you know, people who lived, whose, whose backyards are above the brook, you know, had water coming, you know, into their basements and, you know, flooding their basements and destroying or damaging beyond repair their, you know, furnaces, their water heaters, their... And, you know, when I visited them, most of them said, well, no, we don't have flood insurance. And, you know, we called our insurance company, and they say, you know, we're not covered for flood damage. And so, you know, your homeowner's insurance does not cover you, but you can buy national flood insurance. And so, so I encourage people to, you know, if, to consider that. And Emily pointed out that it's a national program, you know, the premium is the same no matter who you buy it from. So it's something that, you know, people who are in danger, feel that they're susceptible to flood damage, you know, really ought to have, ought to look into it and consider getting flood insurance. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, the, you know, I was kind of expecting the, the resolution regarding the exemptions, exempting the bonded debt principal and interest from the spending cap. Kind of expected that was going to be sent back to the infrastructure, excuse me, the Budget Review Committee for full discussion, but I guess we're going to, it's going to, we're going to look at it Thursday night, I hope. You know, that's a special meeting, it's an unusual time. I hope all of us can make it. But, and I hope that, that, you know, the people from the administration, thinking of the mayor, I'm thinking of Mr. Cummings, I'm thinking of, you know, the CFO, the city treasurer, you know, Alderman, excuse me. I apologize. That was a slip of the tongue. I didn't mean to say that.
I don't want to be accused of taking credit I don't deserve.
Well, that's one way of looking at it. Can be there, because I know I have a lot of questions about, about the, you know, the charter provisions. You know, I see that, you know, not only is there the opportunity provided in the, in the charter to exempt principal and interest from the bonds, there's also the opportunity to exempt capital expenditures. There's, there are, there are additional sections that talk about how, you know, money can be, you know, from the surplus can be used for, you know, special emergency needs. So there, you know, there are a lot of, the, you know, the spending cap, you know, as it was written by the author of the spending cap, does provide for many opportunities for us to exempt various expenses from the, from the spending cap. And so I'm wondering how all of that, all of that works and what the, you know, and I know that that's all in the charter, and I know that there were, you know, over the years, various ordinances were passed modifying or interpreting the charter provisions, and, you know, we're being told that that, that that all went out the window with this move by the legislature. So I'd like to get an explanation to, you know, about how, how all of that works. So I'm hoping all of those people can be present to answer our questions, and I hope we all can be there. If we can't be there, then maybe, maybe it ought to be tabled again for the Budget Review Committee to be able to explore this, because people are already, I'm getting a lot of calls about this, a lot of people are very concerned about it. And I want to be able to understand it completely and explain to people, you know, no matter how it comes out, you know, exactly, you know, what we're doing and why, and how, whether or not it's going to affect their, their tax bill. You know, we've already passed the budget, I think, is, you know, close to a 4% increase in the budget, so taxes are going to go up by around that amount. But I don't think a lot of people understand that the recent reassessment does not increase the tax, the taxes, it just, you know, it's, it increases their assessment, but as the letter indicated, you know, don't, don't take your new assessment... indicated, you know, don't, don't take your new assessment and multiply it by the current tax rate and think that that's what your taxes are going to be. You know, the tax rate is probably going to go down substantially because of the reassessment. And we won't know what that is until later this month, I think, or maybe next month. And also on that issue, you know, people talked about how, you know, I think we've all acknowledged that the letter that came from Vision was a surprise. I mean, we knew, you know, we knew that there was a reassessment being done, a statistical reassessment, and we authorized it, we knew about it, you know. And, you know, a lot of people that are criticizing us now were asking us to do a more frequent reassessment because they were hoping that, you know, the change in the burden between the residential and the commercial that occurred at the last reassessment, you know, reflected a, you know, a downturn in the commercial real estate market. And they were hoping that it would have rebounded so that, so that there would be an evening out of things, but it doesn't look like that, that that's happened yet. You know, the woman who talked about her, you know, people throwing out that thing, when I, you know, the envelope, it was, it was kind of a nondescript envelope, it didn't have, you know, the normal official city seal and, you know, you know it's coming from the tax collector or the assessing department or any other department of the city. It was kind of a nondescript thing and I almost threw it out myself because I thought, you know, "Vision Government Solutions, what the hell is that?" You know, I didn't remember what their full name was. So I understand, you know, how, how it, it's unfortunate that we didn't, you know, that Vision didn't tell us, at least I didn't know, that they had finished their work and that they were about to send these letters out so that we would have known they were coming and given people, you know, some warning. So when the woman who spoke tonight said, you know, talking about, you know, holding off on this reassessment, I don't know, you know, if, I always hate to spring these questions on the city attorney, but I don't know if he knows the answer, but if he doesn't, he could get back to us on it. Is it even possible for us to hold this reassessment till next year?
Well, if we were in August, the answer would be yes, it's certainly possible. And there's nothing illegal about attempting to do that. There is a practical problem in that the regulations of the Department of Revenue Administration requires the assessing officials in every municipality to, by October 1st, provide certain information to the DRA, that typically referred to and provided on a form called the MS-1 Form. Now, you can get an extension, and I believe the City of Nashua has got an extent, an extension until October 15th. So we're a week away from that. And it's from that information, which includes the total tax base, the total of all the assessments in the city, and the city budget, and the estimated amount of other revenue, motor vehicles and parking fines and parking revenue and all other revenues. So all of those numbers go into the DRA's calculation of the amount of money necessary to be raised through taxes, which is also affected by our share of the county budget. So that information they get from the county, they put all this information together, determine the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxes, they look at the total tax base, and it's an arithmetic computation. You come out with what the tax rate has to be on that base in order to achieve that dollar amount. I'm oversimplifying it because there are elderly exemptions and disabled exemptions and veterans' credits and all kinds of other things that go into the mix, and exemptions for solar panels and windmills and a lot of other things. The upshot is, I don't know if the assessing department, having put all of that together, is prepared to say, "Well, forget that, we're going to use last year's numbers." And I don't know if the DRA would find that acceptable or not, because if they don't find it acceptable, they'll just decide the tax rate themselves based upon their own best guess. And they don't guess low, they guess high. So I think there are practical difficulties in trying to do that at this point in time.
Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Jettie took some of my thunder. He's also going to be buying us dinner on Thursday, so please make sure you're there. So just a couple of things real quick. You know, I thank Alderman Lopez because he's absolutely right, facts are important, and, you know, it's twofold, right? I mean, people can come up and they can say whatever they want to us, and some of it's going to be true, some of it may not be true, some of it may be completely untrue. So, you know, it's our duty as a city to make sure we have the facts to be able to go back and not to, you know, shame anybody that may be not having a fact, but just make sure our constituents know what's right and what's not. You know, someone earlier that was speaking said her tax rate went up 23%. Well, that's impossible, the tax rate hasn't come out, so nobody knows what that is. She was probably just saying, doing what Attorney Bolton just said and/or Alderman Jettie just said, and just taking the last year's tax rate and multiplying it. Well, that's not, that's not true, but if you go out there in the world and start saying, "My tax rate went up 23%," everyone's running around going, "Oh, my God, our taxes went up 23%." That's not the case, and we don't know it yet. So, you know, facts are important, trying to, and sometimes maybe we don't have the facts right. And so it's important on our end to make sure that the city and people that are saying stuff in here, you know, and we can make mistakes, I don't want to say we're, I've made mistakes, I've said the wrong thing. We're not lying, but sometimes we may just have the wrong information. You know, we were told in July that, or we weren't told, but the city was told in July that the city, the Stellows Field was playable and not a risk that we had to close it down right then and there. If I would have known we had to close it down right then and there, I certainly would have voted to, or if it came before us, to do something about that. My son goes to games there, all my kids have gone to games there, you know, it's important in my household, too. I just want to say Happy New Year to the Jewish community in Nashua, shanat vah. So we talked about blame and we want to, you know, we're leaders, so we got to accept the blame. So if people are asking for heads to roll, should we all just resign now because that's what they want? They want someone's head to roll for the Stellows stuff. I assume they also want some head to roll for the buses. That hasn't come up at all. Anybody who has kids in the city knows that the busing has been screwed up since the start of school, and it's not fully fixed. I know that because it's hit me at home as well. But where's the accountability for that? I don't see any of us going, "Well, I'm a leader in the city, so it's my fault, fire me." Accountability comes when they vote us out. That's when the accountability comes. But people who are hired by the city, Superintendent Andrade, for instance, again, no transparency on the busing, no accountability, even Stellows, I asked him last week, the end of the week, I think it was Friday, or maybe it was Monday, I don't know, but some day, I think it was Friday afternoon, I sent an email to him and President Bishop, who's here, was on the emails as well, so she knows that I sent it, so I'm not lying. And he said, "I'd get back to you next week." I have, and I sent him questions that a constituent sent, not potentially my questions, although they would have been some of mine as well, trying to figure out what happened, because again, people are asking for accountability. And, you know, he said, "I got a meeting on Tuesday, I'll get you some information Tuesday." But I haven't looked at my email after 5:00, so I don't know if he sent anything or not, I'm doubting that he did. So people do have to take accountability in the city for things that go wrong, and he's had a lot of things go wrong since his, since he's been in charge. And again, I'm not looking for his head to roll, but people are out there wanting heads to roll for all the mistakes that are made. So, I mean, I think we're going to, we're going to get that fixed, though, you know, I appreciate the work we're doing to make sure Stellows gets fixed. I hope the busing gets fixed. And just lastly, happy birthday to my son, where I should be, or I should have been celebrating tonight, instead, I'm here with all of you people and all the people out there in the audience. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to dinner.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to start with wishing everybody in Florida to be, that's in the path of Milton, to be safe. I know Alderwoman Timmons has family there, as does Alderman Senate, and I know there are others here who have it. I have family members that are there, too, and they're on my mind quite a bit. And to Alderman Tebow's comment about the busing, I, too, send emails and kind of waiting to hear back a little bit on that issue as well. And I do appreciate everybody who came and spoke, and the person who spoke with the idea about trying to hold off is a constituent of mine. She's very thoughtful, and I appreciate everything that she's had to say. She's, they, very well spoken and so on, and I do appreciate what the city can and cannot do. I, I've been fielding questions since the beginning of this, and I've been, I think, almost daily, sending out emails about telling people to talk to Vision and to talk to the assessing department and how this whole process kind of worked and when it comes down to the abatements. And yes, their taxes probably will go up, and it may or may not be part of the assessment. And, you know, I listened to the Board of Assessors meeting, I got the information that Vision sent out of, you know, depending upon the type of your home, whether it was a raised ranch, which is this type of house, what was the average increase on it, 21%, which is the house that I live in. And, I mean, I've fed every piece of information I possibly can to my constituents that are listening and want this information and, but the thing is that I get from everybody, "Why didn't this come out? We didn't get the information in time." Well, why didn't they know about it before? Why wasn't it put in the newspaper? Because we really don't have a newspaper here in the city. So to Alderman Moran's comment about, you know, that weekly news thing, well, maybe we could do that, maybe we can't do that, I don't know. But the thing is, the city does have a website, the city does put things up there. The one issue that I have, and I'm not, again, blaming, I find information sometimes by tripping over it, to be very honest with you, sometimes I find out that there's something happening over on Locke Street, the end of Locke Street, that there's road closure, because I happen to be on the Facebook page and I trip over what's happening over at Public Works. We don't get all the information all the time, and yet people look for us. There are press releases, and I can't be all things to everybody, none of us can be, we can't be at all meetings all the time and everything. We do our very best. Do we take responsibility? Yes, I do. I say, "I miss this." Alderman Sullivan and I have worked together, and when I see something, I let him know. When he sees something, he'll let me know. We kind of watch each other's backs, you know, when we, when we see something, we kind of try to do this, but we can't be everything, just like the city is going to miss something of getting it out to everybody because we don't have a newspaper here in the city. And it's very, very frustrating, trying to get the information out. There are press releases going out constantly. Board of Health puts out a press release, but what press is it going out to? Is it going out to Manchester? Is it going out to a newspaper that's only kind of doing a Sunday edition? I get these things that say "press release," and I'm like, "Where? Is it just the Aldermanic page that gets this, or is it the, is it the website?" And I have a lot of constituents that don't get on computers, you know, so even though I send out a newsletter, they're not getting it. So I don't want to continue on that, but I do want to make a comment about the spending cap, and I could be wrong, Alderman Jettie, and I'll leave it for better minds to speak to it. But the problem with the legislation is it kind of did a reset. So a lot of the stuff that had been done and supposedly fixed, some of the things, I think it hit the reset and kind of brought everything to, "You just can't go over this," and all the things that we had kind of exempted went by the wayside. That was kind of the impression I was given in the State House. So that's kind of why we had this panic when we were up there and saying, "We, you know, let's do some amendments and so on," and no one would accept those. So we were trying to fix it and they wouldn't, and so just to my, maybe we'll learn more on Thursday. And I'm willing to hear them as well. And I want to make a comment about what happened one year ago on 10/7. What happened when those people were at that concert, if that had not happened, then maybe what we're hearing about and what we're living about wouldn't be happening today. So to say that all these innocent people are dying, and they are, maybe would have happened on 10/7 to start all this. And I have friends of friends that died that day, so I'll stop there.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, in a much shorter vein, the fifth annual June Karen Senior Outing is November 3rd at 12 noon at the Courtyard by Marriott. It's quite an event, I know that Alderman Wiltshire and Alderman O'Brien and others were there last year, and we get to hand out the prizes to the seniors, and it's quite an event, it's a good time. And it's, if you're over 60, it's free. So, that's all.
Get your tickets early.
All set, Alderwoman Kelly?
President Wiltshire. Just a point of order, should we accept the paper that was handed out at the meeting?
Sure.
Can I make a motion to accept the history of supplemental appropriations presented by Fred Tebow at this meeting?
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry, Alderman.
I said, "Can I make a motion to accept the history of supplemental appropriations?"
Yep, you've heard the motion? Discussion on the motion? Saying no, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So to all of you, I guess, the reason I decided to not send R24089 back to the Budget Review Committee is because we only had five people show up at the last meeting. This is an important, important piece of legislation. This is going to kind of give us a map for where we're going the next year or so, and with needs that we didn't expect. I mean, we have the Stellows Stadium, we have, you know, you've heard it all, I'm not going to reiterate everything we said tonight, but we only had five people show up at the Budget Review Committee. This is an important piece of information that we all need to know about, that we all need to vote on, that we all need to be well-informed about, which is why I thought it deserved its own special meeting. So that's why I did it. I know you may not all agree with me, but that's why I did it. Committee announcements.
Alderman Moran.
Tomorrow, 7:00 PM, Joint PDC and Human Affairs discuss unhoused and issues in the city and what we can do to resolve them as a governing body, governing body, sorry, it's too late to speak the English language.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Lopez?
There's a regular meeting of the Human Affairs Committee on October 21st at 7:00 PM here.
Anyone else, any other committee announcements? I just want to announce that I'd like to see each and every one of us here this Thursday night at 7:00. We have a non-public, and then we have this R24089 that we really need to hammer out, so please show up. Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion at the October 4th, excuse me, October 8th, 2024 meeting, of the Board of Aldermen, be so adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 10:19 PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.